Another chore to do, or not so much a chore as a pleasure. So councillors, guests and members of our community. As we open this meeting and reflect on two thousand twenty five, two thousand and twenty five. I'd like to take a moment to recognise something that has brought a great sense of pride to Glastonbury. Lando Norris, two thousand twenty five Formula One Drivers World Champion. Spent his formative years growing up in our town and attending Millfield School. A young man with a clear spark, a love of racing and the determination that stood out even then. This year, that determination carried him to the very top of his sport. Finishing the season with seven race wins, an impressive eighteen podium finishes. And a total of four hundred and twenty three championship points. It has been a season marked not only by victories at home and abroad. By remarkable consistency, calmness under pressure and the resilience to push on in the face of fierce competition. And Lando is not the only young person from our area achieving success on the world stage. We are equally proud to note that Indigo Hinton has won the two thousand twenty five. Sir Peter Yuston of Television Script Writing Award. A prestigious international M E accolade. That celebrates outstanding emergent emerging talent in screenwriting. This award is recognised globally and Indigo's achievement stands as a powerful reminder. That creativity nurtured here in our community can reach audiences far beyond Glastonbury. But beyond the statistics, the trophies and the headlines. These achievements mean something special for us here. They remind us that extraordinary journeys can begin anywhere. In our local schools, our local clubs, our local neighbourhoods. Lando and Indigo's successes show that young people growing up in Glastonbury. Can go on to stand among the very best in the world. Whether on a Formula One circuit or in the international arts community. To every young person in our town, these victories are more than inspiring stories. They are proof that your ambitions, however bold or distant they may seem, are worth pursuing. Whether your passion lies in sport, science, writing, performance, technology, the environment. Or something entirely your own, you have every right and ability to chase it with confidence. And you have a community here that believes in you wholeheartedly. So tonight, on behalf of Glastonbury, we offer our warmest congratulations to Lando Norris and Indigo Hinton. Their achievements are their own, but the pride is shared by us all. So may their example continue to inspire the next generation of Glastonbury's dreamers and doers.
Yeah.
Thank you. Before we move on, I would also like to recognise someone whose contribution. Has enriched that town in a very different but deeply meaningful way, Irina. She has served five years as a Unity Candle's Guardian. Irina has given generously of her time and her spirit in service to the candle and to our community. Each night at nine P M she streams the silent minute, a quiet moment of reflection. That reaches far beyond these walls and she continues to be a steadfast presence. In holding that tradition alongside this. She is a keen and highly respected local photographer. Whose work captures the heart of Glastonbury and its people. So this council wishes to express our sincere thanks for her dedication. And we would like to present her with a small token of our appreciation. And I would also then like to invite Irina to light the Unity Candle for us. I'll give you a small gift first. Please like to light the Unity Candle and join us in standing for twenty minutes. Thank you.
I would have prepared a speech, I think it would have failed at this moment. First of all, thank you Mayor, the Council and the community. For having this honour to serve our community through. The shared spirit that we share in Glastonbury, which is a spirit of unity through diversity. As we prepare to step into a silent minute, I light the candle. I'd just like to say that my heart is filled with deep gratitude. To have that honour and to continue to serve the community. Just being part of, having an insight what is going on in this room. I think it's so important to remind ourselves. Find the understanding, not just here but outside this wall, outside our Glastonbury. Find the understanding for each other, you might not agree on everything, but. Build the bridges, contribute whatever you can to create a better world, not just for ourselves. But for the future, for our children and the future. And thank you.
Okay, thank you everybody. Any apologies for this meeting?
Your worship, I've had apologies from councillor Napa owing to personal commitments and councillor Don Francesco who is sadly unwell.
Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest that haven't already been registered?
Are you worship? Just trying to slow out my foot still.
Thank you.
Okay, what?
Okay, that was any declarations of interest that haven't already been declared? Okay, to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a true record.
Believe they were circulated in advance of the meeting, your worship, but I'm having a little problem. I've got to paper copy it on the board. I don't think Katie had any queries in advance of the meeting. On the minutes.
Happy to propose this meeting, having read them, found no fault.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour of these as a true record, just I will suffice. Okay, item four, to receive an update on actions from the last meeting.
Your worship, I have actions listed here that the assistant town clerk was going to email round. Regarding the West Mendip Hospital bus stop, which I believe various different irons are in the fire with that one. The town council was due to support the soup kitchen, which has been completed and that happens each Thursday, I believe.
It is.
And the roadside dwellers working group are going to look at. The issue that was raised at the last meeting of parking on the Roman Way, so I do that. Believe that group is due to have a meeting and I'm sure that the assistant town clerk will make sure that that is on their agenda.
Thank you, town clerk. To receive an update, oh, sorry, Serena.
Yes, so may I just mention something with regard to the actions update? Which is that we agreed to look at the West Mendip bus stop and since then we've had quotes in. Susanna managed to contact the people who do bus stop places to sit. Oh, shelters, gosh, getting words out. And we've got two quotes in and I'm hoping that we can take that to finance and general purposes. To get a budget agreed for those bus stops so that we can action this one.
Thank you, very good news, thank you. To receive an update, oh no, to note the latest crime statistics. And to hear from our erstwhile officers of the law.
Hello, and thanks for having me back again. Evenings, my from our point of view from the police, it's been quite successful in terms of. The carnival, cross fair, it's both pretty interesting, we were really happy with that. I'll take it for granted, but I felt it was a nice community event as they always are. Going forward, we've got the winter solstice coming up and obviously we'll be around for that. Or it doesn't cause quite the pressure that the summer solstice causes the town, but it is still a key event in Glastonbury's calendar, isn't it? P S P O is trundling on, I don't have any updates, it's going on way above my pay grade, but I'm told that it is moving forward. So I'm hopeful that the P S P O will be in place in the time that we were expecting it to be. The safer, summer safer streets initiative obviously happened with the overtime and all the extra focus around that. So that's now ended, they've now got the imaginative title winter safer streets initiative that is currently happening. But that's a bit more focused around borg licensed premises. However, you'll still see, in actual fact, they're in the town this evening, the patrols on. The overtime patrols are still occurring, you've still got James and you've still got the P C S Os patrolling as normal. So I'm going to have to read, so this is a bit more detailed, this has literally just been published in the last few days for us to have a look at. They're expecting us to continue to pursue A S B interventions, which I've talked about before. So that's the warning letters and the C B Os against persistent offenders. They want us to prioritise criminal justice intervention, so charging where we can for the regular offenders. And that's something that we do anyway, I think, you know, we try to do. Op Haven, which is the overtime patrols, they are going to keep continuing well into the, into the, into the new year. So that's, I think that's very positive for Glastonbury. I think at the last count, that produced nearly two hundred hours' worth of extra policing time in the, in the town centre. And I hope all of you would have seen them at least at some point, some officers that perhaps you didn't recognise, but that's where they come from. Op Limit, which is the Christmas drink drive campaign, obviously that's going to continue, will be. But it'll be focused even more around Glastonbury because of the effects a drink drive can have on a, on a community. Licensing officers have been in the town, have taken some action against some premises in the town and around us. And we will continue to do that because clearly the safe sale of alcohol is one of the key things to keep a community safe. The last two nights you had the mobile police station parked and the town crossed that is something that I want to do more through the winter. To obviously make it more visible and able to be disposable to. And for those of you who aren't aware of it, we do the walk and talk scheme where females can be taken out by a female police officer to have a walk around the town. And let us know what worries them. And vogue is very much part of the winter safer streets. That is, and again, this all falls under part of the neighbourhood policing guarantee, which I've spoken about before. So all of this is being monitored and we have to feed back to the home office in terms of what we're doing. And that's sort of a specific to this town, so it's us through Yeovil and Chad have all got this extra focus around it as well. We've still got the neighbourhood tasking team as well on top of all of that as well. So I have got the ability to request that they will come and help us and part of their default setting is to come to Glastonbury to support us. That is it, the stats are obviously up there and I'm happy to take any general questions if there's anything on.
Mr Henderson, then councillor.
Sure, thanks, Simon. What happened in town yesterday, I've never seen so many police in Glastonbury in one day, there seemed to be a lot of activity. Not that I'm complaining, it was.
I was going to say, yesterday was, completely honest with you, it was one of the busiest days I think we've had in town for a long time, there was some A S P. Two people were arrested. James had one particular person away and the response team had another person away. The, one of them was wanted on warrant and appeared in court this morning and the other in crime is ongoing.
Thank you very much.
But I will just, just on that side, there has been a slight safety structure, as a grand word. We're changing the way some of our internal systems work, so we're working a lot closer now with our response colleagues. And actually, the sort of information is getting better. We're going to do more than that because it's really affecting this meeting, but yeah, we're working better and the information's flowing. And I think yesterday started seeing the fruits of that place.
Thanks.
Mr Match.
Your worship. Last time, the last meeting, it may have been a crime meeting, so the prime suspect, if I may refer to them obliquely as that. Is apparently up on a very serious charge and badly injured person and you were going to look into what happened to that. Because there's all different rumours floating around on the street and I have to say, I have no idea, which makes me feel a bit lame.
Yeah, it's certainly investigation going on, all the serious crimes take a little while, as the crime yesterday will take a little while. But as soon as we've got the information, I'll make sure it goes back.
Yeah, well, the other, another point here, the P S P O. You said just now you hope that it'll.
Yeah, I mean, when we expect it.
When we expect it.
Next year, I was told, I was told it was nine months, so it'd be towards the end of next year. I mean, if you want to refer to, that's what I would, maybe you've got, you've got Ewan who's offering to speak, I don't know if the. Record my astonishment.
Yeah, thank you. No, I was going to go councillor Cousins, councillor Cook and then yourself.
Thank you, your worship. Well, thank you, Simon. My, my question's around P S P O. There was a press article, I don't know whether you saw it, widely distributed across the internet about the P S P O. Apparently the local police team describing it as a toothless tiger.
We actually don't describe it as that.
And I just wondered if. Because that's, I thought it was misinformation, but what, what do we do about misinformation like that?
I'd like to, I haven't seen that, I'd like to see that, but we absolutely don't, we were one of the, I was. Certainly to set minimum when it went, we discussed earlier, James, that we, you know, it might not have been broadly used across Mendip as it was then. But it was used every single day in the town, every single day, it certainly isn't a toothless tiger. And I'd be interested to know who's described it as.
Oh, your worship, may I come back and just say to any members of the press watching, you've heard it here first, not a toothless tiger. As described by the police, they describe it as a toothed tiger.
Councillor Cook.
Yeah, without mentioning that.
It was licensed premises, that's all I can say, yeah, it was licensed premises, yeah.
Councillor Manning.
Yeah, I was just going to add that last week, I think it was, I was on BBC Radio Somerset, they interviewed about anti-station behaviour in the town. Because I had actually had a meeting on the Wednesday morning and I was interviewed on. I got a phone call from BBC Radio Somerset and basically saying, well, what do you think of the police, what are they, what are they like in the town? I said, well, actually, I think under the circumstance, I think they're doing a pretty good job. The real problem we've got is that this P S P O, the fact that it was taken away from us. And they said, well, we can't really mention that, we need to speak to Somerset to get a comment. And I think that's why it got my appearance, if it was such, on the Wednesday got spiked. By this P S P O story, which suddenly said P S P O is a toothless thing. And that was because that was the message that was given out in response to that.
Your worship, councillors, further to P S P O, you may have read my updating. My eight pages or whatever it was this time round, I apologise for the length. I had meetings with Somerset council officers dealing with our P S P O today. At three o'clock this afternoon. What I can say is that the target date still is within that six month timeframe. The process is that they have requested from Avon and Somerset Police all data referring to us by the fourteenth of January. Currently, the A S B team at Somerset Council numbers one person only and they're out to recruitment for a further four. And I have invited that team to come and visit us in the new year, which they have taken me up on. Further delays are possible because they're grouping Glastonbury with two other locations and please forgive me, I won't tell, won't say which they, those locations are in Somerset. The rationale for that is that if they're going to be putting forward P S P Os. It's much easier if with Avon and Somerset Police, if it's just one submission rather than multiple submissions. It is, it is definitely a proposal that has teeth, as mentioned by colleagues. And when described to me, when you layer on the community protection order, the community protection warning processes as well. It then adds to that all. I met with also the director of public health today, Dr Alison Bell for Somerset. And we looked at some of the deeper issues surrounding our issues in the town. And I also met up with some of the community outreach teams through the community support cafe yesterday as well. So where it was described in the media as a blunt tool. We definitely do recognise it's a tool amongst many that we need to employ. In order to deal with the sensitivities that we have in and around the town, hopefully that helps colleagues. Thank you, worship.
I'm just going to ask some questions to Simon. Is the winter safer streets initiative the same as Saturday's safer streets initiative in terms of numbers now?
Yes.
And how often realistically could this happen?
I mean, we share it amongst us through. Us, 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 bringing chapter, yes.
How many days a week is it run?
It's available seven days a week for us to book it, but. Potentially, yes, but obviously it depends on whether it works because it's used in community events or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Given all the different barriers, the extra policing access available, and we've seen, I think. How do you feel about that? Do you feel happy? Do you think it's made the right amount of difference?
Yeah. As I said, I'd like to make, I'd like to do more, but clearly I've only got a certain amount of resource available to me and to the town. I think the litmus test is how are people feeling? If people are feeling safer, that's the, that's the real, you know, like stats, stats can. You know, I've been a police officer a long time and stats can tell you one story and the community will tell you something completely different. But I've always tried to deliver policing specifically to Glastonbury. And specifically to try and make Glastonbury feel safer, you know, and sometimes we, what is, sometimes we're doing wrong. But I've always liked to think we listen and we change and we continue to evolve and we continue to work with the, the high street working group and learn and move. Took to the community's need and clearly last summer, I really supported when the community needed more. And I think we've got it and, you know, and I think we're using it and we will continue to ask for it and we will continue to use it and we'll keep producing it as long as we can.
Mr Cousins.
Just a point of order, your worship, please can councillors remember to stand when speaking as according to the standing orders of this council.
Thank you, councillor.
Just thank you for coming along, it's really great. And sometimes you're not here and there's usually a question that comes up on the stats and councillor Cousins, I can't remember what the question is that you often ask about the stats.
So that question is being cleared up, the question is about the convictions. We don't see those because they are outside of the parameters of the police, as you explained to us, yeah. So that, that mystery has been explained. I did wonder is whether this council could present the figures around the number of convictions related to. The arrests etcetera that happen in the town. And I would still think that that might be useful data for us to have. Because many people perceive that people get arrested and then they get taken somewhere and before you know it, they're released again. And that kind of doesn't help contribute to the feeling of safety in the town.
Thank you.
Just carrying on from councillor Cousins, I think we, all that information would be in public domain, wouldn't it? So we could find a source of.
The court results are in, in public domain, yes.
So it could be something we could chase up ourselves.
Very quick aside, I think this may not go anywhere at all, but I did pick up the fact that. Whilst you can have low level crimes having a really high impact on public safety with serendipity. And I did say that actually what I would like to see happen is the ability for, as you do with certain crime, sort of hate crime. You've got an enhanced sentencing if it is a hate crime. I'd like to say if you've got a, an area of, you know, the winter safer streets initiative running. Then actually a harsher sentence would be available to magistrates. Now, have asked for serendipity, all that, actually, so you'll think about it, you'll talk about it, so I will keep picking that up with. I do think that could be the way of doing it, if you come and commit crime in Glastonbury, you will get a harsh punishment. And that was raised with the Assistant Police Prime Commissioner yesterday by councillor Lesham. And I think the term was aggravated. Yes. And so that is being discussed at that level as well.
Mr Cook.
Yes. Just back to our. Is, is the pub watch street still involved with?
The other street, yes. There's still twenty. Still running and actually we're looking, I won't say too much because we're not sure how much, but we're actually looking at enhancing it and making it better.
Really? Excellent. Is it one ten?
Yes.
Excellent.
The pubs that don't attend, we visit and ask why they're not attending. Because that forms part of, the newer pubs certainly, that forms part of their licence, they should engage in those, those processes.
Hey, thank you, thank you for coming.
And thank you all for your support as well.
Thank you, James. Thanks, James. Okay, item six, to consider and approve the schedule of payments. To receive, we need to vote on that.
Yes, if councillors and I will suffice for you and the deputy mayor, please to sign that, your worship.
Yeah, so I, I will suffice, I, thank you, thank you. Okay, next one is budget monitoring report, so hopefully you'll have seen this as well, it's a multi-page document. And there are notes to go along with it. notes to go along with it. The interesting thing for me is that we've had the first two sets of payments for the hire of some rooms next door in St Dunstan's House, so Glastonbury Room and the Pambra Kitchen. So that's good news.
This one's just for noting, Your Worship. Yeah, unless there are any questions. We do encourage questions in advance of the meeting if there are any, but everyone seems pretty content, Your Worship.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. I will suffice.
Aye.
Thank you. Do I need to sign this?
No. Just for noting, Your Worship, but thank you.
Okay. Right, sorry, councillor Rony Dougal.
Thank you. I just wanted to, please, can you minute, congratulations to the people who did the phosphor, particularly Sarah, because she does work so hard. And, you know, they start seven in the morning and finish nine at night, let alone all the months of work that Sarah put in to get it going, and Connor, and the other staff. I just think it's a real celebration of our town, and that we need to really celebrate the good things, enough bad things going on, but phosphor is definitely a good one.
Good.
I would love that minute.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item eight is to receive an update on asset and service devolution from Somerset Council.
Short and sweet, Your Worship, still waiting on Somerset Council's legal team to progress items from their side.
Thank you. To receive an update on St Dunstan's House.
Again, short and sweet, Your Worship, we're now up and running in a skeleton form. The audiovisual screens are booked to all be fitted in mid-January, and the operations lead continues to build a programme with external organisations of sessions and activities to happen in St Dunstan's House. You referenced that we've started, and it'll start to get busier from January, Your Worship. So we're just working through some of the final touches to the actual building, but we've received practical completion, it's now ours. And yeah, it's being used regularly as an addition to the Tuesday Charter Market, and we continue to take bookings for events mainly from January.
Thank you. So I'd also like to go in the minutes that we thank everybody involved in getting St Dunstan's House up and running. It's been a long task, sixteen months as a building site, and we're just about at the tail end of it. Councillor.
Your Worship, councillors, I'd just like to, I'd like to ask, do we know when we're likely to see scheduled events on the internet for St Dunstan's House? Many of the community have asked me, they want to get engaged and involved, but they can't seem to get the information at the moment.
I can briefly respond. So most of what's happening is happening with organisations that have their own channels. However, the operational lead had a meeting with our website developer today, and we're going to adjust the town council website to reflect what's going on in the coming weeks and or month. But it's mostly organisations that have their own, et cetera, that they'll be targeting people that way.
Thank you. And one related thing is this town council is looking for a media officer. So we've had a meeting about that. The town clerk has been working on an application pack, and so we want to, like, properly cover our media, so all these little things running away in the background. Thank you. Okay, we need a new member of the council to serve on the Joint Burial Committee. So perhaps you know, perhaps you don't, but Glastonbury and Sharpham have a committee of eight people, so one from Sharpham, seven from Glastonbury Town Council. Nick Cottle was one of those members, and he's passed away, so we now need somebody. This committee doesn't meet very often, and, but, I believe you're already on it, aren't you, councillor Cousins?
That's just what I was wondering.
Any volunteers? No? Yeah, thank you, councillor Henderson. Do we need to vote on that or not?
What I was just going to do, Chair, it's not a, it's not a meeting that I clerk, so I don't actually know who are already members, if you could just a second. It's clerked by the responsible finance officer. So...
I'm on it.
You're on it.
Yeah, LB, John Cousins, Zoe, Paul Manning.
Just checking that councillor Henderson is not already on.
Good point, Connor.
Does meet very rarely.
Give me a, trying to find some paperwork, and I'm not seeming to find... Yeah, if you, so what I'll do, I'll minute councillor Henderson, I will continue to search while we have the meeting, and if there's a problem, we'll come back to it.
Thank you, Connor. Thank you.
Councillor Henderson was someone until the last meeting.
Ah, councillor Henderson's already on it then. We have someone other than councillor Henderson.
Can you tell us who the other people are, please?
Councillor Manning, councillor Henderson, myself, councillor Price, councillor White.
Okay.
Is it only the seven, is it?
We need seven.
There's one from Sharpham, so we need...
Exactly, yeah. Okay, councillor Henderson.
But I'm already on it.
Already on it, Your Worship.
Okay. Perhaps if anybody else would like to do it, they could email the town clerk.
Yeah.
Would that work?
It does meet very seldom. It would make it easier if it had a full complement of members, Your Worship. It meets very, 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 very seldom.
About twice a year.
Yeah.
No. I'm not going to say stick your hand up just so I can have a name on a bit of paper, but if someone wants to stick their hand up so I can have a name on a bit of paper, that would be fine.
Serena. Well done, Serena.
Please don't expect me to attend.
You'll be on the summons, and you can send your apologies.
Resolution, Connor, which was to take on no more obligations.
Not this year, yet.
This was last year.
Thank you. Okay. Right, this one, to consider and agree categories for next year's community awards. Now, what we've done this year and last year, I think, was we did it in the annual town meeting. And so as far as I remember, do you want to say a few words or?
I can, Your Worship. The categories you had last year, so obviously, we had the Citizen of the Year, which the council does each year. You had Volunteer of the Year, you had Young Volunteer of the Year, and you also opened nominations for Volunteer Long Service Awards. They were the categories you had last year. If you would like the same categories this year, that is absolutely fine. If you would like to get rid of any categories, that is fine. If you would like to add any categories, that is fine. But we'd like to start promoting that in the new year so that we can have nominations of January, February. You make your decision in March, and the winners are invited to the annual town meeting, which is at the beginning of April.
Councillor Cousins?
Perhaps you could have Racing Driver of the Year.
Councillor Rony Dougal?
I really liked the fact that we had both Citizen of the Year and Long Service Volunteer and the Young Volunteer. It felt like we covered the bases, and so I'm very happy with what we did, I don't feel the need for any more.
So shall we stick with what we've got? Those four?
Exactly what Serena said, yeah. Yeah, I agree completely.
Do we need to vote on that or?
Very good, Your Worship, you've got a proposal a second.
Okay, proposal, second, all those in favour? And it's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed, councillors. Right, to form a third-party operated market working group. I presume this came out of the markets?
So what happened here, Your Worship, at the Property and Assets Committee meeting, which is the committee that considers the market rights and charter that the council now has, it was raised that so that applications can be considered in more detail and by a wider audience of people, it would be good to establish a working group. And I think it was councillor Price suggested that full council sets up a working group so that all councillors can be involved in the working group, and then also the working group can involve other members of the community as it sees fit. And then the working group would give recommendations in advance of Property and Assets Committee meetings as to which market proposals to accept or not, and it gives the working group an opportunity to maybe meet with those proposing to run markets, to ask for more information that we might not have at a meeting, so.
Yeah, that's exactly right, as far as I remember. And also, it would speak to...
Lisa.
Lilavati, who came in earlier, Lisa, because it would enable us to get some communication going between the different groups, the different, because I thought the atrium market was the Tuesday market, I'm really confused about what it was.
It is.
So, but it would be really great to get the right people in the room together and support, support that communication and find out what it is that our market traders want and need and how we can help them. I didn't know that we didn't have enough banners or advertising, so that would be a really good space, I think.
So the working group was meant to, was supposed to focus on third parties approaching the council, asking for market rights, as opposed to acting as a forum for how we run our own market. That is considered through the Services Committee, how we run our charter market, but there could be a working group of the Services Committee, but I don't think that the one working group should do both things.
In terms of getting information from workers, from market stall holders, that could perhaps...
I think, I'd hire the Services Committee, but I think we need a wider working group for market rights, which is what we're talking about right now.
Councillor Rony Dougal?
Yes, so having already done the meeting that I did that sorted out Lisa and Morgana and the Saturdays that they were going to have, there was also Craig, and it was Craig who came along, and he'd done a really lengthy, in-depth proposal, but we hadn't seen it beforehand. So we hadn't actually been able to look at what it was, the work that he'd put in, his skill, his expertise, and so that's why it was deferred to a working group to actually, because it's a very different thing what he's asking. So Lisa using the car park, no problem, Morgana using St John's Church and the Market Cross, no problem, but a Sunday road closure, two or three times a year, that's more of a, more of a mission, that's more of a problem. And I understood that this was what we actually needed, was to be able to work out with Craig, did we find it feasible? Should we give it a trial run, maybe midsummer, which would be a nice time to trial run it? He'd given us various dates, and that we could maybe take that end of May date that he gave us, and come together with him to see what was needed. That was my understanding of where this all came from.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also to find out how it impacts on the other markets, I think is part of that discussion and that thinking. So, yeah, do we need to propose that then or?
If the council could agree that you'd like to establish it, so there could be a proposal and a second and a vote, please, and then if councillors would like to nominate themselves to be part of that, and then at the first meeting, consider who else you would like to invite. And the beauty of a working group is that they are, informal is probably the wrong word, but you can invite who you like, you can have your meetings, you don't have to jump through all of the administrative hoops that you do for a proper committee meeting, but it just needs to funnel its recommendations into the Property and Assets Committee meeting ahead of whatever meeting it's going to decide a market rights. So we just need to be on top of the timing of those various meetings.
Councillor Cousins?
Your Worship, I propose that we form a third-party operated market working group.
Councillor Henderson, second, all those in favour? And, okay, all those against, and any abstentions? One abstention, thank you.
Which councillors would like to be part of that working group? Don't all put your hands up.
Councillor Manning.
Councillor Three.
Councillor Serena, Rony Dougal.
I'd like to, but I've just volunteered for the burial board.
Already on it.
Sorry, I've got a bit for a space.
Your Worship, may I? It may be useful to have any councillors that have run their own kind of trading business in the town. It may be a useful asset for this sort of working group, you know.
Councillor Henderson. Thank you, because that's right.
Yeah. That was a very nice answer.
Thank you, councillor Cousins, and thank you as always, councillor Henderson. Okay.
Just to make sure that, did you say the Services Committee will be looking into Lisa's points? Because I think that is important that we do...
The Services Committee look at how we run the charter market, yes.
Thanks.
And the market in the atrium is part of the charter market.
Yeah, no matter what was made, it is part of it.
As Zoe was saying, communications.
Your Worship, I'd be happy to also put myself forward for this, but I'm unsure how many meetings I would be able to make.
Okay, we can, certainly, they don't need to be that often, I shouldn't think.
They would, I presume, Your Worship, they would be as and when required, but in the week leading up to a Property and Assets Committee meeting, because we'd have to have received the application, the working group will need to meet to consider it, to then put in a recommendation to Property and Assets. So probably if people want to pencil meetings in their diaries, it will be a week before a Property and Assets Committee meeting.
Councillor Cousins?
Your Worship, just a reply there, of course, the mayor has the ability to attend any meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you. So it can be any Tuesday at nine o'clock at the market? Oh, what have I said? Thank you. Okay, the next item, shall I put that in there?
Yeah, I was just going to speak to that.
Okay, the next item is something Paul Manning, councillor Manning, has suggested, which is about nominating the Red Brick Building as a community asset. Deputy Mayor wants to say something, and councillor Cousins wants to say something.
May I just clarify something on the wording of the agenda, Your Worship? It's for the council to nominate the Red Brick Building as an asset of community value.
Okay.
Should have been listed like that on the agenda, but it wasn't. But that is what the council is being asked.
Asset of community value.
That is correct.
Your Worship, it's a point of order. I'm a shareholder of the Red Brick Building, so I wonder whether I should be involved in this.
I am as well. Thank you so much, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm a shareholder.
Okay.
It stops me for discussing it, but...
Looking advice, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I just take who has declared that they're shareholders? I've got councillor Cousins, local Bande, Serena Rony Dougal, councillor Price, councillor Henderson. Thank you. It's not a pecuniary interest, so it's up to you whether you'd like to abstain, but it's not one that you have to leave the room and not vote on, it's not a pecuniary interest.
Okay. Can I ask about the process? How long does it take, and what does one have to do?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I think I'll start with declaring my interests. I'm on the town deal board, for one. I'm also a director and trustee of BERT. For those who don't know, Becquerie Regeneration Trust is a charity that was set up to bring derelict industrial buildings back into life. So I care passionately about the history of Glastonbury, the industrial history of Glastonbury. I'm also, I'll mention it, a creditor of Becquerie Construction Company. Okay. The reason I put this on here was because it's well-known that the Red Brick Building is in difficulties, and the extent of those was made clear by Bond earlier, it's in administration. It's insolvent, it's basically as a business, if that's the right word, it's going to fail. And basically, the assets will be taken over by, if they go into voluntary administration, an administrator, and then they will be sold to the highest bidder. Now, I've already, one property developer, not far from Glastonbury, approached me and said he was interested in buying the Red Brick Building with a view to flattening it and turning it into industrial units. Now, I'm not making any judgement or anything about this, but if we look at the history of the Red Brick Building, it was established about just over twenty years ago by a bunch of kids, for want of a word, who squatted the building, and then a lot of volunteers got involved to actually get it up and running as a community benefit society. So this has really been driven by the community. Those kids are now in their thirties and forties, and the reason for me putting this on the table was basically so that if we were to nominate it as an asset of community value, then if the administrator did put it up for sale, then the community have got an opportunity to buy it. That doesn't mean the town council have to buy it, it means that the community can get together, and if they want to, they could raise funds to put it together. And they've got, they've got six months in which to do that. So it's putting a marker down, so there is, for those people who are passionate about it, they really want to have it happening, then it's... it, they really want to have it happening, then it's a possibility to do. And hopefully, obviously, there's been mistakes being made, certainly in the last couple of years, but historically, in the last few years, the Red Brick Building was a well-run community organisation that probably made a small profit, but it served a lot of people. And it's whether that, this is whether we want that to continue.
Thank you. Just like to have Paul, would that include the part of the building that's under construction, is sort of being investigated?
Well, it would be easy to separate.
Because obviously, we're looking at the bar and performance area, right?
It's a moot point, you know.
And the offices, etc.
I think of it as building A and B.
Yeah.
Sorry, I think of it as building A and B, but there is obviously building C as well, but it's a moot point, it's entirely up to us what we decide.
I see, alright, okay.
Councillor Muffin.
If it was nominated as a community asset, would that give us any kind of priority with the administration? Doesn't have any, you know, it'd be a straight kind of highest bidder deal.
There may be people who are probably better answering that than me.
Councillor Rani Dugan wants to speak.
If John can answer, why don't he answer first?
It came out of localism act 2011, and it's one of the excellent pieces of legislation from, dare I say it, the Conservative and Liberal Alliance, but it enables the community to identify assets, it has to be then approved by the authority, which in this case would be Somerset County Council, although, that's ironic, isn't it? And then, it doesn't mean that the community can buy it cheaper, but it means that the community has the first right to buy it, and therefore, if the community of Glastonbury wanted to keep that as a community asset, then people could come together and form something, I don't know, like a community benefit society, and then create it. Alternatively, Somerset could just bog off, couldn't they, and just leave it alone, but I won't believe.
Councillor Dugan.
Okay, so as you probably know, we've recently been successful in purchasing the field up on Windmill Hill, and as part of that process, one of the directors looked to have the field labelled as an asset of community value. And I'm very well aware from that attempt, because they didn't succeed, that it can be quite a difficult process, particularly for non-bureaucrats, because it's full of jargony and bureaucracy, but what it does do is it would have given, so the auctioneers were selling the field, and it would have deferred the auction for six months to allow the community to get the money together to buy it. So the auction was set for when, and then it could have been a further six months' deferral. And that was what we saw as the only real value for it, because there we were raising the money through the community, which we did very successfully. It is possible to raise good load of money through the community, but it takes time, takes time and a lot of work and a lot of energy. And so the six months extra would have been useful, which we didn't get, because we didn't meet the conditions for an asset of community value. So I think it should be looked at quite carefully, whether the Red Brick would meet those conditions.
Councillor Cook, or no, Councillor Osborne, then Councillor Cook.
Yeah, I'm not a shareholder, but I did gatecrash the shareholders' meeting, and the buffet was very nice, I will say that. But what was very clear was that that building is built on land which is full of little streams and little springs, and that is why a lot of the underpinning of these great big brick pillars was basically falling apart, and they had a big funding thing to try and prop it up, and some people have suggested that that's where some of the town deal money went, God only knows whether that is true. I just put it out there. But the bottom line is, it is going into liquidation, isn't it?
Yeah.
And there are already a police inquiry about some of the finances around it. We are not even sure who actually owns it, I'd be interested to know what people around this table think about the ownership. But my honest opinion is that we should keep as far away from this as possible. If it is levelled and industrial units are put on it, that would actually be returning it to exactly the purpose that it was built for. Those buildings were not built to be heritage sites, they were built to be manufacturing factories, and they were not built for long term. That's why they built them on land that wasn't particularly stable. And, you know, it really bothers me to hear some of this stuff, oh, some people squatted it, yeah, that says a lot. How much money has been poured into that? Money that was wasted on a zip wire, on a neon pagoda, and all the rest of it. And are we going to throw more money, good money after bad? Because we will get entrapped into this one way or the other, and I think this town council up till now has managed to stand apart, and although people have come here and slagged us off, and said that the town council has been hand in glove with some of the stuff that's gone on, we know that's not true. And I think we need to be seen, like Caesar's wife, not only to be clean, but to be seen to be clean. And I would really caution against anything to do with the Red Brick Building, because it will come back and it will bite us.
Councillor Cook, then Councillor Cousins.
Yeah, obviously, I agree entirely with what you've just said. But, I mean, the sad thing is about how good that centre was, and it was us at all that actually fed the young boys and girls in the freezing desert when they were demonstrating against it being knocked down. So I feel, you know, a little bit responsible for it. But they were great kids, and they went on for about three months, didn't they, before they got it, actually got it, and hence, the work that's been put into it is phenomenal, I've got to say. The only thing that I found disappointing was I was looking for space myself, and it was actually, space-wise, it was dearer than it was in the high street, you know, per square foot. So that didn't quite work out, the money didn't quite work out, by the sound of it, from the start. And, you know, with the tragedy being, with all the art, all the, you know, the fashion, that everything that was going on there, not everybody's taste, but, you know, it gave a lot of people, a lot of opportunities to do stuff and whatever. It's just a damn shame, there was nobody running it as a business, which was as it was intended. It's just an absolute tragedy. So, and Swarda already having lost, what was it, 24 million, I think, before Red Brick, now the Red Brick, you know, the 800,000 tranches, two tranches for, you know, buying the shares and all the rest of it, and now this, you know, there's no way, it's got to be the third time lucky, you know, and I let a proper, qualified development company take it on, put proper plans in it, do proper excavations, get everything sorted out, it's the only way that's ever going to be sorted back.
Thank you. Councillor Cousins?
Just a point of order, I believe that the Red Brick Building is owned by the Red Brick Building Centre Limited, a community benefit society, not a public. Up until the town deal, the money that's been spent, wasted, however you want to view it, is the money of the people who are members of the public, who invested into the community benefit society. It has received grants, etc., but until the town deal, as Rick said, it wasn't doing too badly. And it's very unfortunate that the town deal, which is designed to have supported the town, has actually been responsible now, in one way or another, for the demise of a community asset. The town council, if it put forward, nominated the Red Brick Building as a community asset, would have no obligation or connection to the Red Brick Building through doing that. All they're doing is saying that this is an asset, belongs to the community, which it does, I think it fully fulfils the criteria of a community asset, and it would give the community here the opportunity to be the people who would be able to buy back an asset we already own. So I think that there's merit in that, and when I say we already own, I mean the towns' people. If we don't try and make it, nominate it as an asset of community value, then it will go to the highest bidder, and it may eventually be destroyed and new buildings built there. Well, that may be of merit too, but I think that the 20 years of aspiration of this community to keep that building going, hundreds and hundreds of people within this community are shareholders, I think it would be irresponsible of us not to attempt to try and register it, nominate it as an asset of community value. The process of registration, for once a council, Somerset council receive it, if they actually employ any officers still, would take six to eight weeks, and it could be a valuable thing to do, and it will put no, no onus on this council to be responsible for that building in any way, it's just a gesture that we can do.
As a Lokabandu, then Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I also went to the shareholders' meeting last week, two things, one is, it just became clear how many people there love the Red Brick Building and have poured their heart and soul into it, secondly, how bitterly they regret accepting all this money off the town deal, which has effectively sunk it, they're just out of their depth, in hindsight for sure, and just unable to cope with that much money, and, you know, has pulled the whole thing down. My feeling is, if we nominate it as an asset of community value, it's not committing the town council to anything, which I completely agree with Councillor Osborne, we would be extremely careful before doing so, but it would be allowing somebody, unknown parties in the community, to step forward if they so chose, if it went up for sale, which it probably will.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with Councillor Cousins and Councillor Lokabandu, and I think, time and again, members of the community have come in to talk to us about the Red Brick Building and how it's impacted on the community, and it is clearly very much loved within the community, and I fully support this proposal.
Just like to do a point of order, and that is, I'd just like to remind councillors that Red Brick Building has requested for insolvency petitioners to do the activity of working out whether it's still solvent or not, and that report has not come in yet. So please, can I just urge councillors to make certain that we, make certain we stay in those facts, and until that report comes in, we shouldn't be saying whether it's one way or the other, because there are effectively two different courses of actions dependent on that report. My understanding, having spoken to the directors of the Red Brick Building, is that that's underway, they are engaged, and they hope to get that resolved as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councillor Smith.
Bearing in mind what the county councillor has just said, could we defer this to the next full council meeting, if we can, or are we able to make a decision now? In which case, I fully support the thoughts of Councillor Cousins and Councillor Lokabandu. We should play with time and get it protected, so the community do have an opportunity to purchase.
Councillor Cousins?
Just to come back, Your Worship, on that, a building doesn't need to be under threat of any action or sale or anything to be listed that has an asset of community value, it's just acknowledging that it is, and if it should ever be sold, ever be sold for whatever reason, gives an opportunity to a community-based group to buy it first.
Councillor Muffin.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how the community is going to buy back a building they already own, but that's an interesting one. I'd just like to say, it would go to the highest bidder anyway. I'd like clarification that no money has been given to the Red Brick Building from this town council at any point.
Not that I'm aware of. In grants or anything?
The only thing, we used to support the youth club there, that's the only thing I'm aware of.
Your Worship, I think that before minoting that, I think that we should ask the clerk or some other member of our staff to go back through the records of the council, because the Red Brick Building has existed longer than any of the members of this council have sat on the council. And we mustn't forget that key players within the Red Brick Building at the beginning were people like Councillor Alan Cloke, and I am totally unsure what happened before 2011, which is when Steve and I joined the council.
Maybe it'd be prudent to say this council.
Yeah. This year would do it, yeah.
And I think, you know, what is happening with the farm as well is worth considering, and whether that can be linked in as a community asset, because I truly believe it is.
Yeah.
And I don't know what we can do about people who are still very upset, very out of pocket, very confused about what has happened or what hasn't happened. I know that there are lots of processes happening, I know that we've been advised not to make any comment, but I'm wondering how we are able to speak to these people who are clearly very upset still, and it feels like we're having to be silent, and that's really hard.
Yeah.
Councillor Osborne?
I mean, I agree with you that I'm very concerned, I mean, people like Jeremy come along, make those comments, I really do think that we should pass a resolution from this council, saying that we support the workers who have not been paid, and that we want to ensure, to the best of our ability, that those payments are made and it's all out clear for them, because one of the things that I understand is that some people got paid and others didn't, there's no clear reasoning as to why, but I really would like to see us go out publicly, all guns blazing, saying we want those people paid.
As a Rani Dugan.
Yes, I totally agree that those people who are left in debt should actually receive money. I don't know that we can do it personally, but maybe we could help find some way, and I'm following on, because until I spoke with Bob before the meeting, I didn't realise that they were going to take the farm away as well. That is absolutely shocking.
Yeah.
The land has been bought, the buildings are going up, the planting is happening, the farm is an actual happening project, and for them to kill that project, because the life factory's gone down, to me is criminal. It's criminal, it's malicious, it's spiteful. The farm should be allowed to be separated off from the life factory, and that the life factory, maybe the Red Brick go down, that is a tragedy, but to actually pull the farm in as well, I don't know what we can do as a town council, I really don't know what we can do, but if anybody has a greater understanding of the powers of town councils, you know, and how we can actually, as he said, stand up to Somerset council who are doing this, and it's, I have been writing on behalf of another project that they've gone and scuppered, and I've been writing to the people in the county council, and some are supportive, but others have gone and scuppered yet another of our projects, and it's like they really want to do us down in a big way, and there's no reason for them to scupper Rydys Farm, just as there was no reason for them to scupper the ACE project as well. I was going to speak about that later, but it's coming out now. And those people who understand, who know processes, I don't, I'm not a bureaucrat, I don't understand them, but those people who do, please help us find a way. I would like to protect Rydys Farm, I would also like to protect ACE and our solar panel park, they're two crucial projects, and there's no reason for either of them to be scuppered.
Point of clarity, Your Worship, because I'm a director of Avalon Energy, I just wanted to say that the Clean Energy Project is not completely scuppered, so please, members of the press, please don't write your toothless tiger-type article, I know it's a good headline, but the Clean Energy Project is still going, it's still operational, and is still putting solar panels on rooftops, but the part of the, as people will know, the ground-mantled solar array was refused planning permission by Somerset council, who also happen to be the organisation who is looking at putting solar panels on that ground as the town deals, anyway, I'll shut up there.
Councillor Hart.
The reason I wanted to answer the gentleman who was speaking is because I have spoken, and it's in the public domain, anyone can see it, I have spoken repeatedly, time and time, again, on behalf of the tradesmen at Somerset council.
I have asked at every opportunity that they find a way to find the money to pay them. So I really just wanted him to know that what he was saying was not right and, you know, everybody is being blackened by this. And so there has to be a point where we have to actually be transparent about what's happening and you can't, you can't actually, it's not about Somerset Council versus Glastonbury Town Council versus the town deal board. That isn't what it's about. And, and I think, you know, that needs to be out in the public domain rather than the really nasty things that are being said at the moment. So, you know, I will engage with that guy because I will put him straight.
Thank you. I'll, I'll say one thing. So we're very limited to what we can say. So at the town deal board meeting on Friday, we were sworn to confidentiality. So we're not allowed to speak. Okay.
That's fair enough, but I can say we have tried to get this.
Oh, I know. And we have as well. And then the things that are unfolding are sort of unfolding and they're greater than us. So, so, so that's the issue. So we can sort of say these things. We know much more than has been said, but we're not allowed to say until Somerset. I know you do.
But lots of the things, I will say, that are being said by people sitting here are factually incorrect and the information is in the public domain. You've only got to go and look for it. So, you know.
I just, I just want to thank you councillor Hart for not engaging in public participation because that is, that is the rules of the council, it's in our standing orders. And so, but for you to stand and say now what you've said, I think does speak to some of those worries and those concerns and now you are on record saying those things, whereas earlier you wouldn't have been. You would not have been on record saying those things.
Councillor Smith then councillor Cook.
Just to stick to the item on the agenda and I'd like to move to vote on the proposed proposal.
Can we just hear councillor Cook? Because he's had his hand up for a long time.
Help Serena with this because it's, it's not pretty, but it is a fact that the Red Brick Building, which we didn't know about, were managing the monies for the contract and they gave 98,000 to your project, to the, to the field, the enabling field. It's there in black and white, right? So it's not, it's not Somerset County Council, they're having to pick up all the pieces because of their own ineptitudes and their own mistakes. That's it. End of story. So it's.
I don't think if the councillor was talking about the enablement field, she was talking about the farm.
Talking about the farm.
Shall we move to vote? This is the front row.
Okay. Let's hear from councillor Manning, councillor Henderson. So we're going off topic and I think we've got two different threads running there.
I just, sorry, I just wanted to clarify what councillor Cook was saying, that the 98,000 was money that was due to the farm.
Yes.
Not, not, not to do with Bridey's Farm. That's the money.
Or the enabling.
Or the enabling project. That, that money went to the life, went to the life factory for the farm.
Councillor Henderson.
Yeah, just for clarification, I mean, I agree with Serena and, and, you know, my heart, when I went to Bond tonight, you know, she looks absolutely sort of wrecked by this. So is there anything with this proposal that can encompass that? Or are we going to have to deal with that completely separately? That's a question.
I, I think what I'd like to do is read Bond's letter.
Yeah.
And, and then sort of see how to respond from that because I haven't read it yet. Councillor Cousins, and then we need to come on.
There, there's nothing to stop this council nominating two completely different assets as assets of community value, particularly if they are.
Ah.
Okay, so that, that's an answer for what you were saying. So we do the.
Would you like to amend your proposal?
I'm quite happy to accept the amendment to what the council wants in terms of what.
So I would like to propose, so we've got the proposal for the Red Brick Building as an asset of community value. I would like to propose Bridey's Farm as an asset of community value.
We have that already.
I think we could have them as separate things, two, two different things.
Three different things?
Absolutely.
Keep, separate them.
Okay, yes, because of, because of the media background.
So can we please vote on the first one? We've got a nomination, we've got, who was the second?
Don't have one. That's what I was going to say.
Councillor Henderson's the second.
All those in favour.
This is Red Brick as a community, as an asset of community value.
Any chance of asking a question?
No.
Okay. And against, two abstentions.
Yeah, I'm abstaining because I'm concerned that I'm a shareholder and.
So by majority two.
It's not pecuniary interest.
Okay. And, and would somebody care to nominate Bridey's?
I'm proposing.
Thank you.
I would second.
Councillor Cousins, a second it. And all those in favour of the farm as an asset of community value? And all those against? And any abstentions? No. So result with two against.
Thank you. It's a majority, your worship. I just clarify on the point raised about the farm. Yourself and myself made an offer quite some time ago. I don't know. To the project leads at the farm when this was unfolding, for them to consider if the town council could take the ownership temporarily of the fields from the Red Brick Building and that was refused by the project leads. So this council did actually, or yourself and myself on behalf of the council, subject to a decision, did make that offer, but it was refused by the project leads at the farm at the time. Just wanted to clarify that, your worship. Thank you.
Moving on then.
Yeah. Resolutions of delegate, excuse me, of delegated committees.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just pop, they are in the folder. I'll just pop them on the screen. These are just for noting, your worship, there was only one which would have required a decision, but we've done that with the third-party operated markets working group. These are just for noting, your worship, there was only going to have to be one decision, but we've already covered that off with an agenda item on the third-party operated markets.
Okay, thank you.
So I will suffice?
Yes.
Aye. All right. Aye, thank you. Updates from advisory committees and considered recommendations for any decisions.
I do believe, your worship, it's a very, very short report. Only one advisory meeting has happened since the last meeting and there were no recommendations.
Thank you. Unitary councillor reports, we have, oh, excuse me, we have your extensive reports as always. Thank you very much indeed. I hope you've all read it, councillors. Would you care to say anything? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship. And councillors, just the final one to highlight the fact that at the previous town council meeting, a question was raised about, do we know where all the caravans are, et cetera? I just want to confirm that we've got those all DA-s basically mapped. We get a monthly report, as you've seen in, in, in our reports, and both myself and councillor Hart are now on that distribution list. And I went out with the environmental crimes officers on one of their usual routine rounds to see the process. So I can confirm that. With regard to future plans on how town council wishes to deal with that particular issue, I'll go through the working group with those proposed suggestions under separate coverage.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Cousins.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Both councillors, I, I wonder whether you receive any special briefing on the town deal at all from the town deal members from the county? I, I wonder whether there would be merit in this. I think that as our council, county council representatives, if you could both approach the executive and ask to be fully briefed on the town deal, I feel that would be useful.
I have. I've asked and I'm still waiting. I will keep asking. It is very difficult. You know, as you may know, I asked to sit on the town deal the minute I became a councillor and I was refused a place at the table. So it's been really difficult for me to get information about what's going on and information that I now do have is confidential. So, you know, it's just really a difficult situation.
Councillor.
Likewise asked. At boss, I am given bits of information from members of the town deal board. Again, as your worship has said, there's very limited stuff that I can disclose to the public.
As a Randy Dugan, sorry for the.
On a slightly different topic, but for Euan. So we've been given the Glastonbury Train Bus Link and many of you, or at least some of us, have received an email from Susanna and she's asking that the town council, in order to unlock the money from Somerset Council for the train bus link, that the town council gives a formal expression of support for L A B G, I forgot what she said, I don't know if you can understand, to get the grant from the Somerset Council, asking for 80,000 towards the pilot, which would be a six-month thing, a pilot. She says to write a formal letter, and I hope that Euan can help me, of who in Somerset Council we should write it to. She thought maybe Richard Wilkins. And this is what I want to ask, is that the town council could do it and maybe Euan can help me with the bits of gas in my knowledge.
Your worship, councillors. Yes, thank you. I, I forgot to add the train link piece. Yes, we did find out about the 800,000 additional grant through the local authorities' bus grant. Richard Wilkins is the portfolio holder up at Somerset Council. I have already approached him and he has asked for us to, before the train link colleagues, so Susanna, I presume, to submit that proposal to Somerset Council. Susanna and I have had an initial discussion and one of the things that I have suggested to her is that all of those parish councils, town councils, county councillors who sit on the route, we might want to approach those councils and ask for a letter of formal support to this proposal when we actually submit the proposal to Somerset Council because then at least that tells Richard Wilkins a tale that it is supported by the communities that it's trying to support. And so we don't have any timelines yet. I don't know what the process is and I don't know what format it has to be submitted in yet, but I have asked.
Thank you. Councillor Cousins.
In light of the fact that the timeline is unknown, I think that in principle, this council should give permission to the mayor to write this letter of support and therefore we, we enable the mayor to do so whenever it's required. And I would like to propose that.
I'll second it.
Could I just say, your worship, the council's already actually supported the project in a decision quite some months ago. So rather than taking a fresh decision now, I actually think supporting that and writing that letter is covered under the decision quite some time ago to support the projects. We don't need another proposal, but yourself in conjunction with myself can write that letter.
Thank you. I think it, it would demonstrate a show of, of support for the train link project if we did at least go through the motion of a resolution around the letter, even though I'm convinced that the clerk is correct.
Not strictly an item on the agenda, you should be taking that decision. I can note that you support it. You should not be taking that decision because it's not an agenda item.
Your worship, councillors, I, I was reminded by Susanna as well that town council has earmarked 14,000 pounds to support this. So you did make a, I believe you made a vote at that time. Whilst I would also agree with councillor Cousins though, when we do come to submitting the proposal to Somerset Council, whilst we could refer to that particular point, i.e. the town council has already approved 14,000, I think it would be beneficial to have a letter of support in due course. You don't need to vote on it now, I would suggest.
I think that's what the clerk is saying. The clerk is saying we will write the letter. We don't need to vote on it. So let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any updates from lead councillors and representatives to outside bodies?
I think this is the next section, just to speak to the community Christmas lunch. I just wanted to say that some of the councillors for several years now, four years I think it is, have sat on a working group committee called the Christmas Lunch Committee. It's not a committee of the council, but it has been supported by the council and we have worked with an enormous bank of volunteers for the last, I think it's four years, to do a community Christmas lunch in the town hall, which has been absolutely fantastic. It has really served our community and people have really benefited from having somewhere to go on Christmas Day if they haven't been able to provide their own Christmas lunch for whatever reason or to be, you know, with other members of their community. Unfortunately, what has happened is that some of those key volunteers who have spent months organising the Christmas lunch every year have had to withdraw for various different reasons and it has left a much smaller core group of three councillors who do not have the time to coordinate the Christmas lunch on that scale this year. Last year we did 350 lunches and we had people coming from Bristol for a free Christmas lunch. That was never the intention. The intention always was that it would be to feed and support our community, be a warm space for our community. So in some ways it was a victim of its own success. So what is happening this year is that we will be having a Glastonbury Community Christmas Lunch. It will just be happening in a very different way from the last few years. The church, St Benedict's Church, will be providing the service that they usually provide on a Thursday to members of the community and that will be happening here in our festival hall, the atrium. And some other members of the community have got together because people feel very strongly that they still want a space to go to, rightly so. And there are several groups within the town who have booked the.
U R C?
The, yeah, the United Reform Church from two till 10 on Christmas Day and they are asking people to bring a dish. I know that they are also applying for a grant, for some funding to help get some, some food and soft drinks and they are also intending to do some open mic entertainment. So I think just to reassure members of the community that there will be those two spaces in town still happening where people can be on Christmas Day. My hope is that, you know, this information will be shared within the community and we will get volunteers come forward who are able to put in the months of work and preparation. You know, we need a head chef, we need a front of house, we need people who have got not only the time but the skills that are required in serving that many Christmas lunches. And I just also want to say a massive thank you to all of those volunteers over all of these years. And there are, people give what they can. Some people, like I say, spend months. Some people just come for a couple of hours of Christmas Eve and peel potatoes. Some people, when they come in for their Christmas lunch, they then help clear away. It has been a fantastic community effort and I'm really sad that we haven't been able to do it in the same way this year. It is still happening, just differently and maybe next year we can figure out a way of bringing it back into the town hall and doing a much more full Christmas lunch. Thank you.
Yes, so I've been approached by Brenzi, who's one of the people.
Yes.
I presume that they're going to look at a grant at one of the meetings coming up.
It's general provision.
So, so that is in hand, yeah, that there may be a.
Sorry, apologies. I was going to read the, the names of the groups, but my internet's gone down.
Thank you. Councillor Manna.
Just a question on that event because the, I've heard people saying to me it's at the U R C, but if you look at the posters, at the bottom of the poster, it doesn't say the U R C.
I believe it's held at the Methodist Church, is it not?
Sorry, I beg your pardon. That is at the Glastonbury Methodist Church.
Okay, that's the one at the top.
Is there something else happening at the U R C or is that a mistake? That we've, we've called it, I think, I beg your pardon, that is the Glastonbury Methodist Church, Christmas Day, two till 10 and it's the Green Men, the Avalon Collective and some other people, apologies for not having the names.
Yeah, maybe you asked, it was just mentioned early and then they decided that the Methodist one was better.
The information is out on social media.
Councillor McDo.
So there's a little concern that people are going to turn up at the one in the atrium and be turned away. Is it the same thing that was, you know, or is it just based on?
Have you got any update on that?
So I believe that. So I believe that the Thursday Kitchen that is run by St Benedict's Church is what is happening here on the Thursday. And it will be for those regulars that go to St Benedict's Kitchen on a Thursday. I think it would be prudent for us to have some kind of communication, maybe a poster on the door to say, you know, there is not a Christmas lunch here unless you're a St Ben's regular. But, you know, walk up the high street and you will find yourself some members of the community to be with and eat with.
Thank you. Anything else on that one? Councillor Manning?
On that one, but I've got another body.
I think councillor Manning does want to speak to something.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, please.
Just a quick report on Chamber. We had our Christmas conference last week. I won't go into that. Next year, we're going to have a relaunch, which will be in Glastonbury. One of the things that has come out of the A S B meetings, which Sarah Dyke has been coordinating, is the need for the businesses to get together. And at the moment, that seems to be a common cause. So this seems to be a good time to have a relaunch. So that will be happening early in the new year.
Are you still planning to be Street and Glastonbury Chamber?
We are still Street and Glastonbury Chamber, but we may end up with something like a Glastonbury Traders.
Confederation or whatever, yeah. Okay, thank you. I don't have any particular announcements this week, which is jolly nice. But I would like to say that several of us went to the funeral of ex-councillor Mike Free yesterday. And the aldermen were there, John Keery, Ian Tucker and John Coles. And they were all people who'd served on the council with Mike.
Yeah, yes.
What am I doing with that? Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, here would be the time to formally thank the staff and to acknowledge what a fabulous Frost Fair that we had yet again this year and how hard all of the staff work and how smoothly it runs and all our partners that get involved with us and the shopkeepers. You know, it's a huge event in the town and it causes disruption. But we hope that it's worth it for the community. And also, yeah, again, St Dunstan's House is now up and running and it's amazing. If, I don't know if anybody's, everybody's been in to see the...
mural? The mural, the lights?
The lights, the shop, what's it called?
The Information Centre?
The Information Centre, thank you very much, yeah. Yeah, so it's up and running. And thank you very much to our clerk for really pushing and pushing.
Yeah, thank you. And also a big thank you to our clerk for getting the most wonderful Christmas tree in Glastonbury. People have complained, people have complained that the lights don't go round in spirals. They just sort of hang down. And we said, whatever. And then also, all of the schoolchildren with those beautiful hand painted bells that John Tucker laser cut for us. So the week before Frost Fair, spent four mornings with all of the schoolkids putting all of those things up and the nice stuff bags, pincushions, whatever they were, from the butcher's shop. And yeah, all in all, it was a wonderful event. And turning the lights on was absolutely magical. Thank you.
I'd like, sorry, I'd just jump in on that, Your Worship, sorry councillor Henderson, just very quickly. Thank you for your thanks for the Christmas tree, but I think the thanks really go to the community services team who actually, I have to say, dressing a thirty-five foot Christmas tree from a rickety cherry picker is not easy. They did the best job that they could do with the lights they had at the time. The additional lights were not added because the community voiced dissatisfaction. They were due to be added anyway. But thank you to John Tucker for the star, which hopefully we will be able to keep and use in the future. But yeah, I would just like to make sure that thanks are noted for the community services team who are actually up the thirty-five foot cherry picker, because it's not a job that I would like to do. They do work very hard. And I know that the councillor is considering perhaps what lights you might want to put on the tree next year. And then hopefully the community won't have anything to moan about, but we're...
Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, 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 thank you.
Did I?
Oh, yeah, sorry, councillor.
I don't know whether this is the right place to be meeting, but it's a sort of communication. I'm going to meet with somebody from the Talking Cafe tomorrow who wants to help the homeless people who turn up at the Talking Cafe and the benches to try and find employment placements. And I noticed that the Somerset Council report has got a reference to the Homelessness Charter, which says something about doing that. So I'm just wondering what sort of help the town council can give. And there is somebody who wants this to happen, trying to find businesses who are willing to try out people who are homeless. Yeah, anybody who knows more about it can help.
Worship, Councillors, I'll take it offline with you.
Yes.
I've done a bit of outreach into that space.
Councillor Henderson?
Thank you. Just a bit of information. Is there any idea of how many people do attend Frost Fair, just as a matter of interest?
We were thinking somewhere around about fifteen thousand.
Well, I'll be honest with you, councillor Henderson. It's a bit like being on an episode of Q I when the answer is nobody knows, because nobody knows. It is certainly in the high thousands, probably reaching tenish thousand across the day. But ultimately, without sort of footfall counters, et cetera, and just extrapolating the limited data that certain places such as Glastonbury Abbey collect, there isn't any real way of knowing, unfortunately. But I'm pretty certain that everyone who does come along for Frost Fair does enjoy it. But yes, it certainly is a very well attended day and I hope that people enjoy it. And we work very hard to keep everybody safe, even leave these two buildings the entire day in event control. So it's something that the town council spends a lot of time and effort doing, but people do really enjoy and the town benefits from.
Very good.
We always have trouble with the buses and trying to communicate with the bus services that there are different routes and that's an ongoing problem that we are aware of.
Councillor Smythe?
Thank you, Worship. I'd just like to thank our climate and ecological emergency officer, Melissa Taylor, for informing us of the National Emergency Briefing on Climate and Nature Crisis, which I am key attended on the twenty-seventh of November. Councillor King remarked on this, if it's okay with you.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Councillor King suggested that we all sign, or those that wish to sign, the open letter. And I'll read what that says, if it's only a brief one. And then also this council intends to carry out an information campaign with regard to the briefing on the climate and nature crisis. And that could just be in the form of showing a forty minute summary of that conference, which was sorted with one thousand two hundred and fifty politicians and business people on the twenty-seventh of November. A very good summary of it, lasts only forty minutes. I think it'd be a good idea to show it in the town hall or somewhere on the premises at some future occasion. And the letter is just asking the government and all public service broadcasters to hold an urgent televised national emergency briefing for the public and to run a comprehensive public engagement campaign so that everyone understands profound risks this crisis poses to themselves and their families. And this is, this is like within the next twenty, twenty-five, twenty-seven years, two thousand and fifty. We've come to a position where two thirds of our agricultural land will be not fit for purpose to grow what's growing now. That's just one of the issues. There were ten leading experts for all different aspects of this crisis at spoke. And it's summarized in a forty minute briefing. And then thank you, councillor King, for bringing this to our attention. And I think it'd be good if this council could go forward and show it to the public at some suitable point in the future.
Correspondents, communications?
Who wants to go first?
You, you go first, then councillor Cook.
Well, it's just an announcement regarding Glastonbury in Bloom. As you know, we did quite well this year. We did fantastic the year before. But despite that, the fact that we were limited this year, we've now been invited to represent the South West for Britain in Bloom.
Oh, congratulations.
That's huge. This is the second time this little market town has represented the entire South West against everybody else in the country. So I'm enormously proud of the people of Glastonbury and all the workers that help us do that. And even better, and this is on a personal note, my house has almost been finished.
Thank you. So again, from this council, I'd like to offer a formal vote of thanks to the whole of the In Bloom team who get all of these wonderful things, not only all the flower baskets and the watering, but also do the portfolio, do this, arrange that, judging, feed the judges. All of that stuff is a phenomenal amount of work. I hope we've taken the time to look in the display cabinet just inside, outside the door of the small hall. That cup, the Priest Cup, is the thing that gives us the chance to go into Britain in Bloom again. And that was the phone message that came this morning. So yeah, literally. So that's a nomination. We might not win, but the chances are they would like us to. Thank you. Councillor Cousins?
I was unsure whether you were asking the council to show that vote of thanks or asking for a councillor to propose that vote of thanks.
Either is fine.
If you proposed it, I would second that.
I'll propose it.
I would second that. I think that you formally noted.
And all those in favour of a vote of thanks for In Bloom. Thank you. And that's unanimous. Thank you, councillors. Okay, is that it? Yeah. Correspondents, communicate...
Councillor Cook, can you say?
Councillor Cook, sorry.
This is a funny one. I've had, I've had correspondence in response regarding a development consultation, which I put in, which all started in two thousand and seven. And with this information I've had from the development management people, we've also received, I've also received a very comprehensive survey and information from Somerset Highways Authority, which is excellent, absolutely excellent. It reads very well, it's very thorough, as you would expect. So we can, I did talk about a potential application about two years.
Unclear what you're referring to, councillor.
Yeah, I'll tell you in a minute. It's all coming, it's all... But it's got to give you a bit of history, because this is quite an eye opener, actually. Yes, it's a, we are planning, yeah, well, this is correspondence, which is explaining, if you'll let me finish, if you don't mind. Now, it involves a quite a unique area. And basically, it's the proposal is for the creation of a public car park. And it would actually hold, we think, I mean, there's various ways to do this. And bearing in mind Somerset Highways, they haven't said yet no and they haven't said yes. Okay, this is the whole process. They're alluding to the fact that we've got to go through the whole process. Now, the project will be possibly able to start off with at least two hundred and fifty vehicles. And ideally, depending how it's seen by a larger company maybe, probably up to four hundred.
Councillor Cook, can I just ask you that this feels very vague? We don't really know what you're talking about.
I'm just about to tell you, yeah, well, I'm just trying to put you in the picture.
Crack it up, please, so that we can move on. We've still got a lot to talk about, or perhaps bring it back.
I've got quite a lot to talk about.
Another time when you've got some more.
There's more, more information will be coming. But I think it's only fair that the people of the town know, because this is going to be quite an interesting one. It's along the A three six one street road opposite Tor Leisure. Right, it's the gate there, that whole field, all the way down.
Bottom of Weyall Hill?
Yes, at the base, Weyall Hill, at the base of it.
So councillor, can I just ask, is that, is that based upon information from the planning committee? Where, like, where is, because...
They haven't put plans in yet. This is, we're waiting for Somerset to give us the go ahead. Well, they haven't given us a go ahead, but they've given us the advice that we need. We have to now make all kinds of investments.
We need to ask you if we can please move on now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll publicize it instead anyway.
Councillor McDougall? Yeah.
I thought I'd just give the council courtesy first.
Protect it.
A special landscape feature, highly unlikely you're going to get a far part.
Not at all. Perfectly acceptable.
Can we move on, please, councillor?
Is there anything else in the way of correspondence? Not from me, you'll be pleased to hear, Your Worship. Thank you. And not from me either. To consider any items for news release or the quarterly newsletter that we're just waiting for our new media officer to help us with, okay.
Well, I think, Your Honour, there were a few things that were just raised then that are potentials. So maybe if the councillors that had something to share, for example, in Bloom, councillor Smythe was talking about something quite interesting, the bus, leaflet, mass train link. There are a few things that can be pulled out from this meeting. So if councillors could send some information in.
Assets of community value, so thanks. Who do you want them to be sent to? The assistant town clerk?
Who do they normally get sent to?
Well, we'll change who they normally get sent to. Let's send them to the assistant town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
So if councillors could please send anything they would like to go into the newsletter to the assistant town clerk. Thank you very much, Katie. Councillor Cousins?
So just, this town council many years ago put in an application for an asset of community value in relation to, I think it was the crown, in if older, longer standing councillors will remember. And I just wondered whether the clerk is comfortable with the process and are happy to move forward with it or whether any councillors that have been involved in that previous one would be useful for them to be supportive, I'm unsure.
I'm always happy to receive support, but there are many things in this job that I've never done before and I have to get to grips with. And this is one that I'm quite happy to crack on with after the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, living room day, thank you.
All right, moving on then.
Okay. Actions arising from this meeting?
Thank you, Worship. I've been starring things with my trusty green pen and writing next to them what they are, so I remember what they relate to. So the community awards, the categories are going to remain the same and we're going to start promoting those in the new year. You've established your markets working group. So someone will liaise with those councillors to set the first meeting and then the councillors will consider who else you'd like to invite along to that. I've noted that the council has separately resolved to nominate the Red Brick Building and the land that makes up Bridy's Farm as assets of community value. So I will liaise with the relevant person at Somerset Council, which quite handily, I know, because of a recent application that councillor Roney Dougal referenced. Yourself will consider at the right time a letter to support the Train-Link project if it doesn't come back to a future meeting. The, I will ask the two organisations that are running their respective events on Christmas Day to consider posters that the town council can then display, so that we get the messaging correct. I've noted what councillor Smythe and councillor King raised and would suggest that probably goes to the resilience committee for them to decide the details of when they might like to use the town hall to show such a film or organise some kind of an event. I've obviously noted the various thanks that the council has given to staff, volunteers, stakeholders, et cetera, for Glastonbury in Bloom and Christmas tree, et cetera. So they're the actions that I've starred in green, Your Worship.
Very much indeed. Okay. Right, we now need to move into a closed session. I'd ask you to leave, please, if you would.
Councillor Holythorne?
Holythorne is on...
Seventeenth of December, St John's.
So be there before...
We've got a meeting here at nine thirty, they call.
Here at nine thirty? Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Here at nine thirty? Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Well done for that.
Red sun there.
No, seventeen.
Seventeen. I've got to go to the loo.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Holy Thorne cutting.
Holy Thorne cutting, ten o'clock, St John's Church, out the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Your worship, could I have a proposal and a second for item number twenty-two, please?
Next Wednesday.
Councillor Smythe, councillor cousin, second. All those in favour? This is to go into a closed session.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you. A closed session, item twenty-two, twenty...